Caution all of you that if you have a fixed web camera and you stand up, there's a decent chance that we're just going to be seeing your groin. So I'm going to suggest that those of you who are unable to move the camera, let's say this pledge of allegiance sitting. We'll take a page from the Royal Navy's. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands, one nation.
Under God, divisible.
Divisible, liberty and justice.
Okay, moving on to resolution number 2020-45 extending the business privilege and mercantile tax filing and payment deadline from May 15th, 2020 to July 15th, 2020. Bill, do you want to tell us something about this change?
Absolutely. But if, in case you have not been on email in the last half hour, we did email out a revised version of this. So I'll start with what was originally sent out last night, and then I'll go into detail about the change. What was sent out originally was simply moving the filing and payment date back from what is currently required at May 15th to July 15th, which would mirror what the IRS did with the federal income tax. After a couple, after a few phone calls and emails today with Jenny and Bob Tate, we talked about, at least proposing to the board, amending that to add a change to the estimation formula for 2020. So right now, the businesses would be required to estimate 2020 at 100%, or at least at 100% of 2019. Understanding what's happened the last couple of weeks and what will probably linger on a little bit longer here, that it might be beneficial to the businesses to amend that, the estimating calculator, so that they can estimate 2020 revenues to be at 80%, or at least 80% of 2019. The benefit, the benefit on the business taxpayer side is it'll reduce their liability immediately, as they will not have to pay on 2020, an estimated 2020 gross receipts that's probably overstated. So they'll get an immediate benefit. On the township side, we're gonna, in all likelihood, we're gonna take a hit. So it'd be beneficial on our end to take that hit in 2019, instead of getting through this tax season and then rolling into next year and then realizing a year later what that revenue loss may be. So as initially proposed, it was just moving the date. That's what's, that was the version one. Version two includes the additional clause that would allow businesses to estimate their 2020 gross receipts at at least 80% of 2019 levels.
Bill, what do you mean by taking a hit in 2019?
When businesses calculate their, their tax liabilities, annually, they're paying on the difference between what their actual was for 20, in this case, 2019 versus what they think 2020 might be. So by reducing what 2020, what they think 2020 might be, it'll reduce how much they have to pay now in 2019.
But we're in 2020.
Yeah, but the, like any other tax, lagging a year, like federal income tax.
So the 2019 payment is due in July. So that's what you're referring to, the 2019 year payment.
So a year ago, these businesses paid on what they, what they thought, so they had, a year ago, they had to estimate what their 2019 gross receipts were gonna be. And now this year, they're gonna have to pay on the difference between what they estimated and what the actual is, factoring in what the estimate for 2020 is. It would be a lot easier if I could actually put a tax form up and show it to you. But the intention is, is that this would allow businesses to reduce their estimate for 2020, understanding what's going on right now, which they would benefit by doing that.
Okay, so I'm going to move to, I'm gonna move in favor of the resolution as most recently presented to us with that 80% discount. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So we've had some questioning already, but is there any commissioner comment?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the budget effect for 2020 versus 2019. And it won't have any effect on the 2019 budget. It's all 2020 budget.
Right. But no, really, the, the impact is, is it'll affect 2020's revenue versus 2021's, when they're filing and paying on 2020 activity a year from now.
Right. So it's got no effect on 2019. That's, so the 2019 hit refers to the revenues that are included or projected in the 2020 budget?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Yeah, well, actually, one other, one other comment is the pub, the public is allowed to, to watch this on YouTube, I guess, we're streaming, but are they allowed to have public comment?
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question, Rich. Bill, have we received any public comment?
No, the, we opened up the email address when the meeting was announced yesterday. And I have not seen any, I don't know, I know Jennifer's on, she's muted right now. I don't know if, if she's seen any.
And I think that I'm getting those emails as well. I haven't seen anything. I'm also on the YouTube channel right now, and I don't see anything in the chat bar. So to the extent that anybody is mistakenly imagining that they can comment using the chat function, which would be logical but incorrect, we've set up an email address for that in particular. Nobody's doing that. So I don't see any public comment. With that in mind, I guess I'll call the vote. I'm going to go word by word, because this is not a system that lends itself well to just guessing who is actually voting. So I'll start with the first word, that's me. I vote aye. Second word?
Aye.
Third word?
Vote aye in favor.
Fourth word?
Aye.
Fifth word?
Aye.
Sixth word?
Aye.
Seventh word?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. Moving on to resolution number 2020-46 extending the 2020 real estate tax discount period to April 30th, 2020. Bill, could you lead us in?
Sure. And I'm glad John Rice joined us, so I don't have to, to play too much lawyer here. So we, when this was originally drafted, the intent is to move the discount period back a month and the face, or the, the full amount of the real estate tax bill back a month as well. There's some nuances in the real estate, the Pennsylvania real estate tax law, that to make it cleaner, the amendment that you, that you received about a half hour ago, instead of changing the due dates, we changed the tax issue date from February 1 to March 1, because the, the real estate tax law in Pennsylvania says you have to offer a 60-day discount period. So by changing the issue date to March 1, that in essence makes the discount period due date, I get my dates mixed, mixed up here. So that would be?
April 30th.
April 30th, thank you. And then moving the face back a month to June 30th, just aligns itself with the same time period between the discount and the, the final due date. I don't know, how'd I do, John?
Very good. I mean, the, the issue here is, the local tax collection law provides for a 60-day discount period from the date of the notice from the tax collector. And the counties, believe it or not, are different in that respect. Delaware County, Montgomery County have both extended it. You don't have control over the 60 days. You do have, actually, I'll say the tax collector, in your case, your treasurer, really had to be, has to be on board with this, because your change in the issue date, which then lets you push the discount date out the full 60 days. So that was the change that we made in the last couple hours in communicating with Catherine over the, over that. And a lot of municipalities in Delaware County are doing this. The county's done it. Montgomery County started to do it. They got some advice, I think, yesterday. The county commissioners approved this. But the only concern was, can you go beyond the 60 days from the initial issue date? So we're moving the dates out to get you within the discount period. And it's really a tax collector issue more than it's a board of commissioners issue under the tax collection law. So she was fine with it. This one's ready to go, and I think it's helpful for the residents.
Is there a reason why we could not or should not apply this to the fees as well?
What fees, Jack? What?
So paragraph four of what we have says that the extended payment deadline will not apply to delinquent filings, which makes sense to me, or taxes for years prior to 2019, which also makes sense to me, or to local services tax, amusement tax, or township fees. And I assume by fees, it means stormwater fees?
Jack, I think you're looking at, is that the business tax resolution?
Uh, yes, it is. Never mind. That's an easy problem to solve.
So this one's ready, this one's ready to go with that change. And your tax collector, your treasurer's on board.
She sent an email shortly after the revised resolution in support of it.
Okay. Well, I'll move in favor of resolution number 2020-46, which is now the right one that I have in front of me. Is there a second?
A second.
There any commissioner comment on this?
Yeah, John, how, how can we change the notice date to March 1? Doesn't the notice have to do with when we sent the bill?
It does, but as long as your treasurer is fine with it, it's technically her bill under the act. She's got the discretion to, to do that. I think the township does most of the collection work. You know, it's a little bit of a muddy area, Rich, and there's some effort going on at the state level to try to amend, provide for this. But I'm taking the lead from the county on this. County and township are both in the same tax year. The only way to do this, though, in, in my view, we had it initially just 60 days, you know, just pushing it out. But to add, I think, the issue date, I mean, we're gonna deem that it, it happened on March 1st and not February 1st. That's basically the effect of it.
So in effect, you're backdating the, the notification date?
Correct.
Okay.
But what we're really, we, the, the best way to do that then would be to issue a new bill.
I'll leave that up to the bill and the tax collection office if they want, if they think that that's necessary.
Yeah, I, I would guess, I guess we don't want to do that. So that, but that's, that's the issue is, it's not, it's not, it's not backdating it, it's.
Advancing it.
Or dating.
Extending it, yeah. It's, it's, it's the opposite of that. Also, John, what, what's the authority that allows us to vote on this, and the other, on the other resolution via Zoom? I don't, I don't, I'm not clear on what, this is a special meeting, as far as I understand, not an emergency meeting. So I'm not clear on what we're relying on to have these votes count, let alone move the notice date.
Well, I think what we're relying on is you have emergency ordinances and resolution provisions in your charter. So that's really the only authority in your charter that you have. You're also in sort of an unusual situation, Rich, I think you probably agree. The alternative is that you don't do anything until you can all physically meet in the same room, which I don't think is a good option.
Well, I guess we could have, we could have met. But what, what if anything, can you write an opinion that this is okay, that we, that we, that this is valid, or are we gonna have to come back and ratify this at some point?
Well, let's, let's get to, you know, if you feel like you need to abstain on this, go ahead and do that. But let's get.
I didn't say I need to exchange, abstain, John. I'm just trying to understand the legal authority that we have to do this, because I don't read, I don't read it in the charter.
Well, there's an emergency provision in the charter, and that's part of it. Part of it is that the unusual situation we're in, it does permit you to conduct business without the usual formalities. That's in the governor's declaration, that's in your declaration. So if someone wants to debate how far we can go down the road, we'll, we'll deal with it then.
And what will we do if we have, if somebody does that?
Well, I think.
My question is, do we have any plan to deal with that, or are we just gonna?
You can always, you can always ratify these types of things, even under the Sunshine Actors Case Law that permits you to ratify decisions that were made without the procedural requirements. So I mean, that's the fallback position. You know, you would have.
If someone brings a challenge telling us that we shouldn't have pushed the tax dates back, I would be very surprised.
Yeah, I don't anticipate that. I, I believe that we have some exposure if somebody says the actions taken are not valid. And that's, and people, people could argue that. And, and I, I can't foresee what that would be. But, you know, you, you never know what somebody would come up with.
What would be the remedy? We go back in time and collect everybody's taxes two months early?
I, I, I think that the, the plan should be to ratify it or else get an opinion that we're relying on, and so that we at least have something for us as, as politicians that we're relying on, advice of counsel.
I mean, John, if you wanna draft an opinion, that's fine.
I would feel comfortable with getting an opinion on that.
And if the board wants me to do that, I can certainly do that. But I think the remedy is you ratify it. That's a simple remedy, you know, if, if necessary.
And that authority is there under the emergency declaration, correct, John?
Correct.
But the charter doesn't provide for that.
Well, the charter does have an emergency provision, Rich.
It, yeah, I'm, I'm reading it right now. It's section 3.05 of the charter. And basically, it says that we can enact an emergency ordinance pretty much immediately, effective immediately. So I think that we could do something at the next meeting if John wants to have something, and this would all be fine.
You know, again.
We don't need an ordinance. This is a resolution, and it should be a resolution.
It's a, it's a resolution, but this is a special meeting, not an emergency meeting. This is not an emergency resolution. We have an emergency declaration, but there's no provision for this. So again, my view is that we should have an opinion that this is valid, that we would rely on as politicians, and that if necessary, we would have to come back and ratify it. But otherwise, we have, we have some exposure, in my view.
I mean, yeah, John, if you want to draft an opinion, I guess that would be helpful. I don't foresee that anyone is going to challenge this. If they do, we can come back and ratify it when we get there.
You may have to, you may have to do this again next month.
Yeah, I mean, if, if this continues, and I'm optimistic that it will not, but if this continues, at some point, we're gonna have to actually start transacting township business. We are by design only dealing with the issues that are truly emergent at the moment. Like I say, at some point, we may have to confront this as more of an issue. We're just not there yet.
Yeah, I think the first time we're gonna need to confront it is when the emergency declaration runs out in a few days. So I, I'm ready to, I'm ready to go to the township and have a meeting. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Rich, are you suggesting that we don't vote on this resolution now and wait for the opinion, or take a vote now and?
No, I'm suggesting we vote now, and, and I doubt it'll be an issue, but.
Okay.
It's just not provided. It's just not provided for.
Doesn't the emergency declaration last until June 7? Is that what we voted on? Bill, how long does that last?
It was two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah. So that would, yeah, June 30th, or I'm sorry, March 30th. March 30th.
So that's next Monday?
Monday, yep.
We can all get together again.
Is that, is that the way we would do it on Monday to vote, or do we have to consider it before it expires on Monday?
Well, it, the board can make that decision. I, I mean, at the pace that the information we're getting is changing, the world might look very different on Monday, the 30th than it does right now on the 25th. So as long as the board's okay with doing a meeting similar to this on Monday, the 30th, it might make sense to, to hold off on that decision until Monday.
Well, the governor's stay-at-home order lasts until April 6th, right? So that's till next Friday. So I think in any case, we would need to extend, at least to be concurrent with the state.
Agreed.
Yeah, you're gonna have to extend it at some point, whether there's a gap of a day or two. I don't think it necessarily matters. But you're gonna have to extend it. Some townships have gone to April 30th, or 60 days, or whenever the governor lifts his, whichever is longer. There's a couple options there. But it really depends on, you know, I don't, I'm not telling you, you need to meet on March 30th. You could meet next, a week from today, next Thursday, and extend it then. You know, to some date certain, maybe to have it coincide with the governor's declaration. But everybody's doing it a little bit differently.
John, would that be a resolution?
Yes. Yeah. Bill, I can send you something on that. We've done probably about half a dozen of these in different counties. And it's all, you know, whenever the initial declarations were done, we have one township that's, hasn't even done a declaration yet. They're gonna do it next week. We have several that have done it, and then some that have extended it within seven days, and some that have extended it 10 days later. But I can send you a resolution that will extend what's on the books now. And then the board will need to decide when you want to meet to do that, how you want to meet to do that. You know, it may be if that's the only issue of business, you know, doing it this way probably makes a lot of sense. Because your, your next scheduled meeting is what, April 13? Yeah. You probably want to, and you certainly want to do it before then, probably sometime next week. And those declarations, I think, have to go to D C E D once they're done in the state. So just, I don't know what happened to the original one, but at some point, you've got to send that to them. So that if there's reimbursement to be had, that there's a record of that with the state.
Yeah, well, that, that flows through the county EMA. So Delaware County has all of our declarations, and we're communicating with them on the cost recovery and all the actions taken. So I think we're good on that front. It would just be the legislation necessary to continue the declaration until a future date, whatever the board feels comfortable with.
Okay.
So John, you and I can draft that, and then we'll get back together on that on Monday night? Would that, I mean, if, Monday's when it expires anyway, so if we can do it Monday, that might make the most sense in terms of lining all the dates up. But I don't know everyone's availability.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Good.
We're all available, Bill.
Not going anywhere.
Jack, are we coming back to 2020-46 here, in terms of the vote?
Yeah, since that's the last issue that's on our agenda, I feel like we can kind of talk about what the next steps are gonna be here. But I think we basically talked ourselves out. I don't see any public comment. I don't see anything in the chat bar. Bill, Jennifer, am I missing anything?
Do we have to vote on that last?
Yeah, we still need.
Call to vote.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there any public comment, Bill or Jennifer?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, great. In that case, I'll do another roll call vote. I'll vote aye. Second word?
Aye.
Third word?
Yes, aye.
Fourth word?
Aye.
Fifth word?
Aye.
Sixth word?
Aye.
Seventh word?
Yee, aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. We don't have an, any other business item on the agenda, but given the weird format, you know, ask, is there anything else that we need to bring up for the good of the order?
I don't know, if Bill or Chris could just give a quick little synopsis of the parks closing. I know that I've gotten a lot of questions, feedbacks from the residents. I put out my newsletter today that I'm 100% supportive. I think that Bill and Chris and the emergency management team have done a, just a stellar job handling this. But if there's something that they want to put out, I think that would be appreciative to the residents.
Sure, I'll, I'll kick it off, and then I'll let Chris fill in the blanks as, as he sees fit. I, I'll, I mean, I'll start by saying it's, it's not a fun decision. None of us here, no, no members of the E O C team looked at this and, and were excited about it. At the end of the day, the goal is, and I've communicated this with, in every opportunity I've had, have had to talk about the situation, is that our goal, our sole goal is to limit the spread of the virus. And the, the congregating that was taking place, especially at the Radnor Trail, was significant. We have, we, we seen the parking lots, and it's, it's jam-packed full of cars, which on one hand is great. That's, that's exactly why it's there, and that's why we want it. But the messaging coming from the state was pretty clear. The CDC has been very clear, and the messaging from the President of the United States has been clear. Doesn't want people gathering. The CDC is saying you don't want large amounts of people together in one place. And what was happening on the, especially the Radnor Trail, is that it was so crowded, that even with everyone's best efforts to socially distance, it was going to be hard to do. And I know there's a lot of comparisons being drawn with other counties and state, in the state trail systems, that they're remaining open. But those are different layouts entirely. The Radnor Trail is, is pretty tight. You don't have the opportunity to really stray off the pavement to, to avoid people. And when you get two or three abreast, and then you have to go by them, it's tight. So at the end of the day, really what the decision came down to was, our goal being to prevent the spread in an effort to protect the residents, is to shut down the opportunities that residents have to, to get together in one place. And unfortunately, that meant the trails and the parks. Chris?
Commissioner, a very tough decision, and what I, I think Mr. White covered everything. Not only do we have that, we have in our file, there's, there's two components. Tammy Cohen, who obviously is very vigilant over the parks in general, but she's at a heightened level of awareness. She has a conference call tomorrow, I, I could say it wrong, correct me, Mr. White, but the National Parks Association, where they're gonna review some of the COVID-19 policies, best practices. So we're staying cutting edge. What I would say is your E O C team, which has been activated by your actions and the emergency declaration, are remaining vigilant on this and not necessarily locking down. We're staying open to possibly opening it back up as soon as permitted, or even prompting the state to give us a little bit of clarification. We do have a, a series of pictures that are in our E O C file, which shows what I would consider overcrowding, parking all over the place in certain trail locations, which just supports what Mr. White said. So we have evidence of this, it's just not opinion-based. But we remain fluid on it. And the second, I, I think the millisecond we can open those back up, or even parts of them, I think we would take that under the, as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and if I could, just a couple things to add on is, I mean, I, I know you guys have all received feedback as well. And, and I do appreciate the support. I know it's difficult. And I am, I for one, am really excited about the day when we can open it back up. It's, it's, if that comes soon, if, if it makes sense to open these back up sooner rather than later, as Chris said, we'll be prepared to do so. And we're looking forward to that day. But there, please know that there is, there were a lot of emails and a lot of communication ahead of that decision, even back a week ago, asking us to shut those places down because of the large crowds that were gathering. So it, it, it's one of those issues where there's people, a significant amount of people on both sides, and just not a, never a popular decision. But again, it was, it was done so with the best interest of our residents at my, at hand, or in mind.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just got a public comment, which I will read, I guess, into the record. This is from Susan Stern. She writes, I think you handled this extraordinary situation well. Okay, I just got a public comment, which I will read, I guess, into the record. This is from Susan Stern. She writes, I think you handled this extraordinary situation well. Zoom is working. Thank you for your efforts in transparency. Susan Stern, Wayne.
Thank you.
You don't have any additional public comment?
Oh, I just have one thing I wanted to say, if that's okay.
Sorry.
I just want to thank Ian and Jennifer and Bill and Chris certainly for pulling this all together and getting us all in the same place. To the question of should we meet in a room together in the next, prior to the April 6 deadline, I would absolutely say no. I think that we should continue to, you know, we should meet again this way. I'm concerned, I want to make sure that us having any gap in an emergency declaration is not going to be problematic for our staff to get done what they need to get done. So, John, if you could advise us on that, and if we need to meet this way next Monday in order to extend that, I'm absolutely open to doing that. I will tell you that the health network that I work for is starting to feel the absolute strain of this, and I will not do anything that endangers my colleagues or anyone in the community. I think if we can meet this way and get business done in order to keep the township moving, we should continue to do so.
One second then.
So he's probably not going to have a immediate response for you, Lisa, but I'm going to ask that he, in addition to providing the opinion that Rich asked for, if he could just make sure that he lets us know the answer to your questions as well, and he can forward that to the board by way of legal opinion.
I believe we should have a public meeting and that we can do it safely. And that there is not a, it's a false dichotomy. It's not either or unsafe. We can do it safely, and we should meet in public and on television. And Ben Franklin once said, those who trade their liberty for a a little bit of security deserve neither, and we should heed those words.
I will not attend a public meeting.
No, I will not attend a public meeting, not when we have this technology.
We should err on the side of caution and err on the side of science. I don't think it's safe for any of us to be in the same room together.
We're lucky to live in a time where we have these technologies that will allow us to keep the public informed as best we can. And I think if we have to do it again, we could do more promotion to get more people to know that they can tune in live. And we know that they can always see these recordings after. But at this point, when we don't know the true numbers and the true, you know, the reports are delayed, and we just don't know how affected our community is, I think it's not just our own safety that I'm thinking of, but it's that of our community members who might be tempted to come out, and I don't want them to be exposed. I would not go to a public meeting.
My safety concern is for my family. And and that becomes, you know, priority above all. So there's, there's absolutely no need for us to come together.
I think we should all assume that the reports we're getting are probably about a week behind. The people that I know that are getting tested are getting the results about a week later. So I think we, we should not be lulled into a false sense of security at all.
The reports we've received say that there were nine cases in Radnor as of today.
10.
And two deaths.
Two deaths in Delaware County, 10 cases in Radnor. And that is reported.
The reporting is about a week behind on what, on the, the testing. So people are getting tested, and they are getting results about a week later. That is not, I believe that is not accurate information, and that those numbers are growing exponentially. We will see that over the next couple of days.
I don't believe that there's any, I don't believe that those numbers are inaccurate. I don't think that they're testing. There's greater testing just means we're finding cases that were already there. We have no idea about the spread.
Right, so the cases are there.
Exactly.
We don't, we just don't, we don't have any provisions to do this in our charter. And I would, I would.
Rich, that's not actually correct. We have emergency provisions in our charter. You just haven't read it or don't like it or whatever.
Now, there's, there's no provision.
So Pennsylvania's, Pennsylvania laws, Pennsylvania laws state says state government entities may only take action during open and public meetings, with some modifications available during an emergency, according to Eric Arneson, Executive Director of the State of Open, State Office of Open Records.
Yeah, the O R has already weighed in on this.
The charter does not say that.
Well, I'm going to say that.
Has an emergency condition.
The charter does not provide for voting on official.
But this is not an issue for vote at this time, so I'm not.
The rule that we have.
We're not voting.
You've already voted twice.
For the emergency.
I, I, I've expressed my concerns with it. I don't think that this is valid. However, I'm happy to vote for the provisions that were raised today.
Well, okay, I don't really get that, I guess.
Yeah, I don't get that either.
This issue.
Well, it's not very difficult. It's not a difficult concept. I, I'm happy to participate, despite the fact that I think that there are legal infirmities to the participation in it.
Rich, Rich, then it's going to be Radnor and every other municipality in the state, if not the country, that's going to have.
And the, and the state government. The state government is running this way in the exact same way right now.
No, I mean, you know, the courts would be absolutely flooded with, you know, with these questions.
And you know. And just like the businesses that are open now at defying the governor, and people are saying that they could be, you know, that they better be careful of lawsuits, staying open, making employees come in, I think that we should be concerned about something similar.
I'm much more concerned about overreaching government and deprivation of liberty.
This is not an issue that we have to decide right now. So I'm going to call for an adjournment, which is the next item.
Second.
Second.
Here, second. I guess I'll do a roll call vote. Word one votes I. Word two.
I.
Three.
I.
Four.
I.
Five.
I.
Six.
He's gone. He.
He's gone.
Seven.
I.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's the majority. Guys, I will talk to you all one way or another before too long. Thanks to every member of the public who tuned in.
Stay safe.
Evening. Thank you, guys. Stay safe. Stay well.